Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the LaPorte County Council regular meeting for May 26 to order. If everybody would please silence your phones, stand for the pledge, and then a moment of silence in honor of Memorial Day, that's why we're here on Tuesday instead of Monday.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Auditor. Deputy Madam Auditor.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Yagowski.
Present.
Mr. Mullenauer.
Here. Can you hear me?
Mr. Erman.
Here.
Mr. Novak.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
Present. Mr. Santana. He muted, Kristi. Are we having issues?
That's what happens when you flip that switch too quick.
Is he there?
Is he there?
Santana.
Mr. Santana.
That's him right there.
Okay, can you hear me right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to mute and then I don't know what's going on because I'm not hearing you guys then.
I'll say present, Jeff. Okay.
For Mr. President.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. Would you pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Quinn. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Next item on the agenda is approval of the April 20th, 2020 meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of April 20, 2020.
Motion by Mike Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Quinn. Is there any questions on the minutes from the last meeting? Is he trying to ask a question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment, public comment is now open. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Public comment is now closed. Department head reports. Is there any department heads that would like to give up, get up, speak at this time? No department heads. Liaison reports. We'll start with Mr. Mullenauer.
Can you hear me okay? Well, just the usual total of 12 Zoom meetings since I think the first one was on April 21st and up to tonight, so about 12 Zoom meetings attended. And most of them, of course, were regarding the COVID-19 situation. I did attend the LaPorte County Health Board meeting in April, and that pretty much sums it up, I think, is the amount of Zoom meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Terry Gardner.
I just attended the FEMC Fairboard meeting that last Thursday through Zoom. That's pretty much all I've just planned.
Mr. Santana.
Yeah, Andrew Wire from EMS is on the agenda. EMA, I've spoke with, and again, as far as we go folks out there, we get these reports as far as what they're doing each and every week, but they're continuing to get as much PPE as they possibly can. And I spoke with again Larry Laddowski, you know, his crews have been operating pretty much on schedule, but because he cannot be with us tonight, I'm going to ask Andrew, who I know is, to comment on the EMS building and just wrap with that because it's really some exciting news. With that, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenbaum.
Okay, I don't know if I can match 12 Zoom calls, but probably could come very close. Been involved with commissioner meetings, council meetings, RDC meetings, took a tour of the EMS building last week with the contractors as they were trying to tie things up. They're moving in tomorrow, which is the big news you're going to talk about, but really we'll let EMS, Andrew really explain some of the process that they've gone through to get there. I've also taken a tour of the fairgrounds, including the new building that's up there, the new barn, the new beef barn, as I'll call it, or cattle barn. I've also seen some of the work that they've done with electrical work out there and groundwork. So it's been a very, very busy couple, several weeks, and also part of the, we'll call it the PPE team of trying to get things ordered and trying to make sure we've got the supplies that we need and the types of things that we need. Also been involved with at least one of the meetings of the, which we'll talk a little bit about, about the plan to open. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Yagowski.
Yes, thank you. I haven't got a chance to talk much about the GIS. It's kind of an unforgettable department we have, but he's done very well, you know. We hired a young person that came out of Michigan City High School, LaPorte County resident, and he just got engaged Saturday to Aaron Elizabeth. So he's a young gentleman here that works for the county and I'm very proud of him.
Congratulations. Liaison reports, been spending a lot of time out at the fairgrounds and obviously Zoom meetings galore, so that's all I'll report. New business, public hearing on the COVID-19 Response Program.
Mr. Novak?
Can I go?
Mr. Quinn?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Quinn?
That's what happens when you say.
Thank you, Mr. President. You're looking right at him.
You know, your light wasn't lit up.
A few things to report. I've also attended many of the COVID Zoom meetings that Mr. Councilman Mullenauer mentioned over the past couple of months. Those have been, continue to go really well and have been very informative. Last week, I attended the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. I also last week met with the Veterans Services Office Department Head, who continues to service our veterans without much interruption, surprisingly to me at least, during this pandemic. So I'd like to thank him for continuing to provide those services and his team. Earlier tonight, I attended the Plan Commission meeting. Also, as a part liaison to HR, have attended a few different meetings, Job Evaluation Committee meeting, Personnel Committee, as well as discussing with our health insurance provider, the quarterly health insurance meeting. Also, this was just before the last meeting, but I did not mention it at that meeting, that I attended the Election Board meeting, and I believe that's it.
Thank you. And again, my apologies, I didn't, it wasn't intentional. So we'll move on to new business, a public hearing on the COVID-19 Response Program grant. Tony Rodriguez.
Mr. President, members of the council, it's my pleasure this evening to be here before you. Before I get started, I'd like to point out a sign-in sheet, which is a critical part of the documentation in the process of closing out the OKRA grant process, so I wanted to make sure the public was aware that we had that sign-in sheet there. Please, if they're going to make comments, please just sign in. It is, again, as I mentioned, it's my pleasure this evening to host, serve as the host, and I'm not the host, but I'm the reason we're here with, in presenting this tremendous opportunity. This came about, and I'll be as brief as I possibly can, to respond to the pandemic and disastrous conditions that have been created by no choice of any of the entrepreneurs or small business owners that exist within LaPorte County. This is certainly, and everyone can agree, that this is something that's been served up by no choice of their own. But you have before you this evening the opportunity to take the necessary steps to put in place a fund of an equal amount of $250,000 that would prove to be a reimbursable grant. Just very briefly, the intent with this, we've referred to it as a Lifeline Grant Program. The formal name we submitted at time of application was the LaPorte County Action Fund. The intent is approximately 25 grants of up to $10,000 each, having a substantial impact on all those small businesses that would, could, and will be strongly encouraged to apply. The intent, when the state made these funds available under the Community Development Block Grant statutes, it's federal money that's coming through, through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, is to meet the objective of low to moderate income employment. So we have that as the primary objective, to meet that low to moderate income criteria. What's also critically important for me to point out to you this evening is that it's a zero-match grant opportunity. The funds necessary to draw down on this grant opportunity is of zero cost, a hard cost to the county. In other words, there, it's a 100% grant to the county. We're, of course, very pleased to have been successful. It couldn't have happened without a tremendous amount of very aggressive response from the county team and then state-elected officials, which we have with us this evening, Representative Pressel, who have been strong advocates of the county being successful in the grant application process. So we're extremely pleased about getting started. Part of the reason the state went along with and supported and approved this grant was that we were, at our time of presentation, strong advocates of being able to respond quickly. So that's what you have before you this evening, along with the public hearing, is the consideration that we've just, we've become aware of in our training session that occurred last week, was the need to establish a fund in the amount of $250,000, which will be reimbursable to the county. And I've explained to you what the procedure would be. What is critical, and you'll see on the screen here, and I felt that it's most important to point this issue out or this reality, while it's a reimbursable grant, and the thought might come to mind that the county would have risk or exposure of not being reimbursed, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs at the state has set up this process of approval, which really serves as a stopgap and an insurance policy, if you will, for the county, that prior to the very final award of the funds, the OKRA office in Indianapolis gets last look at the time of approval. So in other words, they will sign off prior to the final approval of any small business grant award. And that's important to mention twofold. One is because they were in their, in their process of approving, they're virtually signing off and saying, everything that you presented to us is in line with the intention of the grant. You've done an adequate job preparing the package. We intend to do that in bulk form and get that down to them in bulk form. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention that this is truly, it's the county council's ability to take this most critical last step in making these funds available to serve as a lifeline to the small business community of LaPorte County. And with that, I wanted to make sure that you're aware in the envelope you have before you, and for those council members at home, there is an electronic copy coming your way after the meeting this evening, a complete set of application documents, a project overview and description, as well as all the criteria that are necessary to apply for and compete to receive one of these lifeline grants. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions that you might have available.
Mr. Rodriguez, for the members of the council who are on Zoom, if you can just tell the five-step process that it's going to go through just quickly because they're not able to see.
Correct, they're not seeing it. That's a tremendous, a tremendous point. So what, and I know that, yeah, I can see you here. There you go, Bailey.
No, she's not going to work.
Yeah, if, it would be, I think, most adequate, we'll just handle it this way, Bailey. The, I use the term guerrilla marketing a lot of times when I'm promoting LaPorte County. It's the same tactic. We're going to use an aggressive marketing technique with all of our strategic partners to get the word out about the grants to all of the small businesses that occupy a location outside of, or located in an unincorporated area of LaPorte County. So we will be, and step one, that trigger is this evening's public hearing and the council's formal action to establish a fund. The second would be then us disseminating and launching the, launching the applications to the business community, of which we have a list of approximately 225 businesses that has been part of the legwork. So we know where those applications are going. We will also open it up publicly. We will then give the initial phase a 14-day application period by where we will then be receiving these applications and begin to review from the staff internally. We will then, through a rigorous process, categorize those applications, get them into the necessary guidance and method of presentation that meets the CDBG guidelines, and present them to LaPorte County's Redevelopment Commission. And then, following the formal action of the Redevelopment Commission, they would move to their next step in Indianapolis, which would be the final look by the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. And on that slide, as Bailey had shown you, it's the one green box on the screen, and we would liken that to really, they're being green-lighted by the state of Indiana, in other words. They get to that point, it goes downstate, they get the final formal review by Indianapolis, they're green-lighted, they come back to us approved, and we know that it's, in other words, it's not a risk to the county being hung out or at risk of not being reimbursed. So I believe the process that they've established really has taken away the risk. We also intend, at that same time that the applications go down, we'll be sending a, what's called a provisional claim for reimbursement. So at the same time that the applications are going down, we'll be sending a claim along with that, so it shortens the period of time in which any funds would be in transition, if you will.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagowski.
If it's the ideal situation from the open program to the awards, what is, what's the timeframe?
We would estimate, we know that we want to give that two-week period. If we could move faster, we would. However, we need to give, I believe, an adequate period of time, being two weeks. They tell us that they're not going to be longer than, two to three weeks is the time that they've given us to turn around the approvals in Indianapolis.
That's what OKRA says.
On their final look.
So we're looking at six weeks, huh?
To final approval.
That's a point, okay.
Correct. Correct.
And then, once you get approval, how long for funding?
Well, that funding, it really is the point of, if we establish the fund this evening, the, and we have the green light from Indianapolis, then a check could be cut through the auditor's office with the appropriate necessary paperwork and documentation, and then reimbursed by OKRA to help expedite.
Any other questions? Anybody?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Well, this, something just turned around here, where I didn't know that we were going to put the money up front. That was never part of what I was understanding. And again, I apologize, Tony, if I missed part of it, but how do we know that we're guaranteed to get that money back? If you can tell me that, and is there any sort of writing, you know, written that says that it will help, it will happen? Or is it, again, like a lot of the COVID things that are going on, where we talk about, well, you know, we're eligible, we should get, we might get, so please, tell me that again, please?
No, it's a very fair question, Councilman, and I can best answer it in, at the time of application, we were completely unaware of the fact that it was a reimbursable versus a check coming in, a lump sum. However, the grant agreement that has been forwarded to the county, while very complex and complicated as any HUD grant agreement would be, and we're, I mean, LaPorte County's fortunate to have Mitch Bishop as a certified grants administrator. He's an active part of our application team, will remain an active part of the process all the way through and through closure of the grant. But the, what we've been provided in our first training session with OKRA, that's when all grantees found out that this was going to be in a reimbursement type of an arrangement. I believe the way that the state takes the risk out of the equation for the county is by, and these are what we have printed in printed form and will be coming to you via email and is being shown on the screen here in the council chambers, is the five-step process with the last look. In other words, we have, the burden is on us to compile, prepare, review, and then make recommendation and approve who we believe the grant recipient should be. And at that point, they are then sent to Indianapolis to the OKRA office for their final last look. And the terminology they're using is OKRA's review and the low to moderate income, and to assure that it's meeting the LMI criteria, which is low to moderate income, and all of the CDBG guideline requirements of the grant. So that, them having that last look requirement, I would feel uncomfortable standing before you and even asking that we would have a real good opportunity for reimbursement if they didn't have this process in place. However they do, I believe it's one that should provide more than adequate, if not 100% guarantee of reimbursement. And the reason I'm saying they are going to be reviewing the same documents that our entire team will review, as well as the team that will approve these grants at the local level. Does that help? It's tough without having the full-blown grant agreement in your hands, but I'm happy to distribute that it is a complex document.
Mr. Rodriguez, it's part of the council package. If you look at page one of 19 in the package, you'll see that it's actually a contract between the state and LaPorte County, where the $250,000 has been awarded to LaPorte County. So the council members have that.
You're answering right, I did. Let me then, I guess, just ask this question. Okay, so from the first time that we start dispersing some of these funds, till when it is projected that the reimbursement will come back? Do you have a timeframe on that? Did they say anything about that?
I have not asked that specific question, but as, when I was presenting, I did mention, along with the applications that we're sending down for recommended approval, we'll be sending a provisional claim at that same time, so that at the point in time at which the state signs off on our recommended approvals, they will be, then initiate their process of processing our claim. But I can get a specific, I think it'd be safe to assume that it would be the standard time of processing a state of Indiana OKRA office claim, and I, unfortunately, I don't, off the top of my head, know about how many days that might be, but I can get an answer.
Is it a, you get reimbursed?
I guess, and I am going to support this, there was a couple surprises, or at least one, where it did become a reimbursement, and I don't know if I'm, you know, one of seven that did not know that, guilty if I am. And, but again, I'm going to take it from the attorney and from you, that we will be reimbursed, and it is like our attorney just said, a contract that we're going to make sure of, or that's already signed, or it is an impact that I saw in 19, long day, but anyway.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so I'm good, but just, you know, I'm just saying, since I didn't understand it totally, I'm going on your word and added the attorney, that that money will come back, and that's all I'm trying to say.
One thing, Tony, this is, do you have any idea, or maybe you can find out, this isn't necessarily important for the public hearing tonight, but do we get reimbursed as we issue the money? In other words, if we give out a grant, do you submit that $10,000, or do you wait until it's all done and submit one big claim for $250,000?
No, that exact question was asked in the training, and each time we submit, they're making available, because all of these rules for this grant program have been developed between the time that they decided they were going to have a grant program and now. So they've responded on their feet, and that question came up in the training, and they answered that with, we've made available the provisional claim procedure. So each time we send down a batch of 10, for example, a claim will be going with the exact same amount for that, for that amount. So it will be, in other words, no money's extended that haven't already been issued a provisional claim that would be an identical amount to what was just been issued.
Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for the presentation. Question about the application review, who will be conducting that review and making the selections as to those businesses that receive it?
It is an outstanding question and one of the most important, because this whole process is one of, you've heard the term lifeline used, and we can't, quite frankly, can't be moving fast enough. The quick answer to that is the entire Redevelopment Commission, which is a body, at the time of application, we knew that we needed to have a body reflective of the community and its values and a broad representation of its stakeholders. The Redevelopment Commission is, by statute, is comprised of that broad group of stakeholders bipartisan with representation from all the important areas, labor, all those, I don't need to go through the list. Staff will be reviewing based on, based upon the guidance that OKRA has laid out in their eligibility. So staff will be going through rigorously, going through the applications for eligibility, whether the small business meets the eligibility criteria, and then also issuing and working with that small business at collecting the LMI eligibility criteria. And that means low to moderate income. The onus will be upon the applicant, small business, to complete the income documents. Critical for their application is to demonstrate that they have eligible employees that are meeting the statute, meeting the guidance that OKRA's presented. So staff will prepare, review, help prepare and organize and categorize those, and then make a presentation to the LaPorte County Redevelopment Commission. for final approval of of that independent body.
One more question?
Yes.
If I may. Um, it you know, these are new times for us all. Um, you know, we had this PPP program that the federal government ran recently. There were a lot, there are a lot of strings attached to that about what a business may may use those funds for. Are there similar attachments to this? Um, and is there some sort of post-award auditing process um built into the system to make sure that those businesses are following through with what what you describe in in the packet here as as priority uses for that funding?
It, the answer to your question is yes, from from the standpoint of the the state's criteria that they've laid out, uh, one of our early directives by the OKRA office was a small business that that had benefited from a PPP or the EIDL loan, the two SBA uh emergency relief loan programs that were established. Originally, when this process came out, they they stated if a company had benefited from either of those, they would be ineligible to to apply for or seek this grant. They realized that they've made the process very complex and complicated as well, and they have moved back off of that original decision. And the OKRA office in Indianapolis has said, as long as they can demonstrate that the company, that that this application will help save jobs in in this particular company, and people will be impacted, we want to know and we're going to make the this program available to them. So the short answer is they're trying to do everything they can to make the money available to the small business community. It just as you said, these are people, uh, in a lot of cases, that have been in this business their whole lives, doing very mundane bureaucratic things. This process has been an emergency to save companies, to serve as a lifeline, and to save jobs. The the real people are impacted. I didn't know I'd go into this level of detail this evening. However, it's very important for the public to know this. The state realized that if they didn't make available these kinds of funds to what they they deemed micro enterprise type companies, there was gonna be a large percentage of the population missed in the entrepreneurial community. The people that have two, one, two, three, what they refer to as less than five, that's a micro enterprise, and they are eligible. They're eligible under this program. So short answer that I can always make long in in my explanations, however, I apologize for that. It's important for people to know. They've made just about every provision possible to make uh the this program have an impact. At the end of the day, when this is all said and done, the auditing requirement, they're building it in, quite frankly, on the front end. They're making us and mandating that we get the income qualification and the the necessary affidavits from the company on the front end. So they're building in almost an inability to fail audit. And I myself, in my years in economic development, I've been through several HUD audits. They're they're not fun, they they never are. However, having been through one, you know how to address each one of those going forward. They're very thorough, um, and we're fortunate to have on our team Mitch Bishop, certified grants administrator and part of the redevelopment team that's on this this team. Matt Rudden has also been uh very active with HUD. Knows, uh, the state is somewhat mirroring a lot of what Matt has built as the grant applications. They're using that around the state as as the model way to put a program together. So we're fortunate to have those people on our team.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah. Look at Mark.
So this is a public hearing tonight?
It is.
So we do, you want me, I mean, can we open the, so if the public wants to speak now? So at this time, if there's no other questions, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. So anybody from the public that would like to speak on this grant application, uh, grant program? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Please state your name.
Uh, State Representative Jim Pressel, Rolling Prairie. Normally, I get to be on the other side asking the questions, so this is a little bit different for me. OKRA does a lot of these grants, not this particular version, but OKRA grants a lot of money, and they spend a lot of money. I cannot think of one time that after a grant has been awarded that OKRA has ever walked away from any of these. Was that a question?
Can we, uh?
No, I was.
Sorry. Um, so with with that being said, OKRA, I don't believe, has ever walked away from any of these grants. This looks very similar to what IEDC did just recently with what took place out there in Kingsbury. So they they awarded you a million dollars, but you had to spend the money first, right? And then you have the receipts, they reimburse you for those. I'm excited that LaPorte County um was offered this grant. Not every county got an opportunity like this. Stark County was awarded some dollars, uh, the city of Knox was awarded some dollars, and then kind of at the last minute, uh, LaPorte County was awarded a a very large grant, $250,000. And with the my constituents that that have reached out to me in these smaller, especially these micro businesses, um, it this is this is a big deal for them because they've not qualified for some of the other things. And this is that lifeline. Now, I'm very disappointed, and I'll be making some phone calls tomorrow morning to OKRA to find out why is it gonna take them two and a half weeks or three weeks to figure out, does somebody qualify? I looked at the application, looks just like a PPP loan. Those were all done pretty much within hours. So if LaPorte County is doing their due diligence and sending good applications and 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 good people to receive these grants, I I don't see why it should take that long. So I'll I'll take that burden, and I will make that call and see if we can't speed it up. But we all have constituents out here that could really take advantage of this, and I would encourage you all um to commit to make this happening, and the sooner the better. So I'd be glad to take questions if anybody has any questions.
Anybody have any questions of Representative President?
Any concerns that you want me to express to OKRA? I'm glad to deliver that message also.
No, we appreciate you looking into that, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. President, real quick.
Yes.
Not not a question or anything, but yeah, I I was unmuted, and in the first sentence that he was saying, that's exactly what I was asking, basically, and that we have, uh, you know, this isn't a a organization that does not rendig on things. And so it's like, I I did very naturally say, that's exactly what I was asking, so, so, thank you.
Thank you. And and just, I don't know if Tony mentioned this earlier, this is more for, it's for the rural part of LaPorte County. So Michigan City and LaPorte City in the corporate limits are not eligible. So this is, that's what OKRA does, it's more of a rural type thing. So just for clarification, so anybody from the public who likes speak? Anybody from the public? Anybody from the public? Public comment is now opposed. And uh, do we, are we, we're not appropriate? 250 tonight, is it? It's not on.
Is that before the? Is the appropriation before the council?
Well, as as part of the.
It's not.
Oh, Madam Auditor?
We did not advertise.
We sure need it to be.
I think it might have got on there too late.
Um, we'll have to uh appropriate it and vote on it next time, but you could give him your blessings or your approval tonight um based on the vote on in June.
Motion of support would be correct.
Correct.
Right, let's say it.
Correct.
I'll do that, I'll do that, Mr. President, if that's which way we need to go right now. I'll do a motion of support for this $250,000 reimbursement to come back. Uh, and it will, where uh, what account are you gonna take it from, Joe?
Just a motion of support. But it's just a motion of support.
More more or more uh?
We don't need to pull it from the front.
Then, uh, that would be part of my, uh, most of this.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yugalski?
Mr. Mr. Santana? Mr. Santana?
Yes, yes.
So we don't, so we don't go through and go second and go over again? Can that be a motion to start the process, the application process?
Thank you, thank you.
I I guess it's a motion saying that we will fund this 250,000 knowing that we're going to get it back. So as far as whatever the process is to get started, uh, with them streaming these businesses, uh, you know, yeah, let's let's do it. Because again, like we're saying, it's just gonna be so long out, um, you know, I don't I don't know what, you know, how much help.
Thank you, thank you, second, Mr. President.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Santana, seconded by Councilman Yugalski. Is there any other questions? This is a motion, this is a motion of support of the 250,000 and to start the process. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is consider Commissioner's LaPorte County Building Reopening Plan. Do we need to take action on this? No, it's just, I think everybody's received it, and and just so everybody knows, um, it it it's a document, and it, and I'll use the term, it's a living document because as as we get closer to the open date, uh, we continue to have at least two Zoom meetings a week, and we discuss all these things. And um, so it's it's ever evolving, and we're trying to come up with the best plan. So um, some of the things that are in there might be tweaked or changed, and we'll keep everybody up to speed on it. Is that, does anybody else have any questions on that? Hearing none, move on to consider approval for permission to hire a request for two part-time investigators for the Adult Protective Services Division in the amount of $19 an hour or $19,760 yearly. Prosecutor John Lake.
Good evening, Mr. President, how are you today?
Good, you?
Uh, I'm doing fine. This, um, just so the public understands, and members of the council might might not have come across as before, but uh, the APS, the Adult Protective Services Division, is a hub. I'm I head up a hub, there's 17 hubs in Indiana, um, so not every county has a hub, but everyone, so we are responsible, I lead, Christine Harlow is my director, and we we are responsible for uh all of the Adult Protective Services that are rendered in LaPorte County, Stark County, and then all the way over to Newton, uh, Plaski, Jasper, all the way down to Jasper and then and Stark County. So we have six, and so the the what, when I when I was presented for the initial contract that would have covered, uh, in in the run of fiscal year. So this this money comes from the state. It's all, we, it's all federal dollars that come down through the FSSA. Um, and we have a contract that the, you know, they they can track with my office, and the the fiscal agent is the commissioners, uh, and it's all under Title 12, and and so there's different issues. So basically, what this is, is money that we negotiate in a contract on a yearly basis with FSSA. Um, and we we have, for the first time, been able to get them to add money to allow us to hire people, uh, one down on the Newton-Jasper and one down Plaski, um, and, you know, in in that area so that we can have people situated in those six counties. So because what happens is they get a call, and they're up here, it takes them two hours to drive all the way to Newton, and and it's just, it's just a really bad way of running a a program. And I I've been fighting with FSSA for more money. Uh, in fact, we just put in a proposal for what it would take to really run this unit effectively, and that would make these two people uh full-time plus a full-time criminal investigator for fraud. Because, you know, when you're dealing with adult protective, isn't anybody over the age of 18 until they die, that's an endangered adult. And that encompasses, you know, mentally ill, encompasses the elderly, encompasses all different types of people and different walks of life, and then some of it can be criminal, some of it could be well-being. Uh, there's just different issues that we're dealing with. So, you know, I I just want the council to understand that this is not money that that's going in the general, doesn't come out of the general, I mean, fund. We pay it, we get paid back by the state on a on a monthly basis. We have a contract, I think our contract was $354,000 uh through the end of the of June 2020. And then next year, we've gotten this additional money added into our budget, which is, it's usually on a two-year cycle, budget cycle, and we're we're not, we're within that, but that's already been negotiated by the prior prosecutor. I was able to increase that to add these, which is really unusual that we're able to get this money out of the state. But we've been fighting since January 2018, Christine Harlow and I, to get more money and get more people. So we'd ask for approval, and I'll answer any questions.
So these two, these two, the two, the $19,760 times two is gonna be reimbursed along with the other ones?
Yes. It's all all coming into that contract, that when we sign the new contract, uh, which will be coming up here, they're gonna submit that, they're finalizing the contracts, and that that contract runs from July, that's why this doesn't start July 1st. What we're trying to do is, I'm putting this, otherwise I could wait to July 1st and hire, but we want to get, because obviously, if COVID, you know, I think the Adult Protective Services is really important right now, and so we want to get these people hired, and we found uh people who are actually law enforcement, but they they'll be working part-time, a part-time basis, on an hourly basis.
Great, Mr. Yugalski.
Yes, um, Mr. Lake, was this the, in reference to, well, there's two two questions I asked you. Uh, first question was, is this part where we didn't, the previous didn't get their application on time, so we were minus some period of time for one of the jobs? Because I thought we, there was somebody in your office that we did not get the application on time. Maybe it was just prior to you coming in?
That's the you, that's the second thing, that's the victim advocate.
Okay.
Two different, two different things.
Okay, fine, just just ask question, okay. So then the second question I ask you is, you said this is a full-time representation. You're meaning by two part-time people become, makes a full-time representation, right?
Well, we're we're hiring in different counties, so.
Yeah, for two part-time people make the full-time position that you're looking at, as you're kind of looking at, right?
Because you said, there's two part, there're there're two part-time investigators. So what I'm saying is, when we're going forward, they asked us to submit, what would it, what would it take for us to really run effectively? To really meet the statute of of providing, because I have a statutory obligation under this contract to, and a contractual one as well, to provide these services. And I told them, listen, we need full-time investigator, not part-time, but we only gotten funding for part-time. So there's two part-time investigators. I mean, if you want to look at it as one full-time, but it's really two.
I just used the word full-time, so I'm just just making sure.
And I'm just giving you a heads up in the future, but again, this is all state money that.
I agree, we know that part, but we also know it's state money that if it goes away, then those people also understand they're hired.
Yeah, this is not, this is all contractual with, uh, this is not, this does not come, this is not a grant, this is a contract. This is money comes, so if the money goes away, we lose, yeah, they could come in tomorrow and say, hey, we're pulling the plug and all this, we we don't have any.
Correct, so my last, my last question then is that, with this, is it, is there any insurance, penalty, any type of stuff beside that?
No, because that would mean.
Are they doing any traveling or things like, will they be traveling, get reimbursed for travel?
They may get mileage, which would come under their, uh, the contract we have with the reimbursements and stuff.
Okay.
That's built into your budget now.
Yeah, and and again, I don't think, probably, Mr. Winsky would have to, we've had a couple issues that we've had part-time people that we've issues with, uh, you know, driving cars, doing so on and so forth. Is there any issue that we have that you've had in the past? Joe, you brought this up, other employees that we've had?
Say that again, I didn't hear.
Reference to?
I wasn't my name, but I I couldn't hear the words.
Okay, remember here, you you started a couple years back about part-time, full-time? If it has to be a part-time or driving cars or driving through county cars or driving cars to get reimbursed, does that qualify them because these are part-time employees that are not, that are really not on the general fund payroll?
Well, um, in this case, I think that that um, they're, they're part-time, that they're funded by grants, and I think they have to have the cars to travel, isn't that correct, uh, Mr. Prosecutor?
Uh, these these people will not have their own cars. And we have cars that are provided for our other full-time investigators. That's part of our contract that we get money for. I think we get mileage otherwise as part of, under that, and there's there's funds that are built into it.
Through the grant though, right?
Yeah, through the contract, yeah, it's 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 the, it's a contract, and not specifically a grant, but it's federal money, yeah.
This is a, this is a different, um, whole different story. Normally, um, part-time employees would not be allowed to drive cars. You're correct, if that's what you ask.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Lake.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Does anybody else have a question?
How about as far as part-time uh employees being in for money?
No.
No what?
Nor that it does not cover, I think, is what they're saying.
Right, so anybody else have a question? Hearing none, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Seconded by Mr. Yugalski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yes.
There any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is consider approval to amend salary ordinance of 20, 2020 through 2021 to add part-time Adult Protective Services investigative position at $19 an hour slash $19,760 yearly. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Prosecutor, this is to reflect what we just did for those two people.
Exactly. So you give us the authority to hire, then then these, starting July 1st, if we hire these people, that's when they begin.
I make the motion to amend the salary ordinance 2020 oh one to reflect these part-time Adult Protective Services investigative positions.
Second. We have a motion by Mike Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Quinn. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is requesting permission to spend transfer from unappropriated pre-trial diversion fund 2500 to VOCA grant for shortage on grant match in the amount of $12,404.14.
That is correct, Your Honor, uh, Your Honor.
I'll call you, Your Honor. I'll elevate you. I'm going to retire.
Joey, Joey's excited.
Sorry, it's, it's just a.
I know what judges' pensions are.
Um, and what this is, is that we have the VOCA grant. Now, th- this is a grant that comes from federal government, uh, through downstate and we apply, I wasn't the prosecutor at the time. The, the grant that's in effect goes from October 1st, 2018 to this October 1st of 2020. And in that grant, what had happened was that the prior prosecutor had, Gil Boss used to be having office for years down at Laporte City Police. And that was used as an in-kind match. The, the, the expense of the office, uh, was used and he, when she was brought back into the office by the prior prosecutor, had all victim advocates in-house instead of, uh, stationed out, they lost that ability for the in-kind grant. And, and what happened was, uh, the, that grant before the prosecutor did not come to the council and get approval to add a, a new, uh, victim advocate, a third one on that grant. Um, and so then they got approval of the grant, but the problem is that the prosecutor came here and asked for general fund money of like $80,000 to fund the in-kind match. And you guys said, no, you take it out of our infraction deferral. Uh, so what has happened is now this is, we, they took, I think, 70,000 the last two years and now we have 12,200 or $404.14 left of that match that we have to do. We have to give 20% of a match, uh, to the 100%. Now, going forward, we submitted our new VOCA grant, um, and since I had moved, you know, with the sheriff's permission, we, we put a, a victim advocate in the sheriff's department and with, uh, former chief, uh, Mark Swistec in Michigan City Police Department, we have a victim advocate in the Michigan City Police Department. They ran out of room. They took our, the office. They don't have room at Laporte City, so we didn't have anybody there. But we were able now in this, this past grant, uh, that we just submitted into April to have over $100,000 of the in-kind match. Uh, so hopefully this won't, hopefully we'll get the money, but we were told that, that obviously this is a grant, um, and we were told before this grant period that they're going to be cutting these monies. Uh, so we may, we may end up losing one, two, or three victim advocates if, if the grant is not, does not come back. So we're well aware of that. We're hoping though with this in-kind to have now alleviated this problem.
Great.
So I mean, I'm just asking for that, to be allowed to take it out of my infraction deferral to pay this, that at least through the end of this grant period. So we don't come back because otherwise we get in trouble
Right.
with them downstate.
Definitely. Pleasure.
So make the motion to be able to spend or transfer, uh, from unappropriate pre-trial diversion fund 2500 to the VOCA grant. I guess it's a transfer, uh, 8131 for the shortage, or I should say in the amount of $12,404.14.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
I second that motion.
Seconded by Councilman Santana. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Go vote.
I voted here. I was the only one here. So, next door.
All right.
Thank you.
Got to make you count.
Next item is the old business. We have, uh, Laporte County engineer.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to take it off the table?
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski to remove the Cougar Road project from the table.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed? Thank you. Item is off the table. So, um, Laporte County engineer requesting permission to spend from the motor vehicle fund restricted, restricted fund, uh, for Cougar Road project in the amount not to exceed, is that?
It, it should be not to exceed.
Not to exceed, um, $210,000. Is he on there?
Is Mitch available?
Mitch, Mitch just came in.
Right.
I don't care anybody. This is more money than what we thought before.
Mr. Yakula, would you like to get up and talk?
There we go.
Let's get somebody.
We'll take you.
Hi, I'm Mikey Kula. Uh, work with Endot, the Laporte District Traffic Investigations Engineer and definitely have been kind of partnering up with, uh, between, uh, Bitch and Jay, uh, the county engineer on, on this project. And, uh, yeah, this all started, we've had, uh, Endot has received numerous, uh, requests over the years to have a traffic signal installed either at State Route 2 and Cougar or, or US 20 Cougar or both. Uh, and my predecessor at Endot had, uh, come up with a solution since with the split of traffic, they could never warrant a traffic signal at either intersection. Uh, so by converting Cougar Road to a one-way street, forcing everybody northbound to US 20, which is the most logical place to put a signal if you're going to warrant one, uh, just because of the, the geometrics there at, uh, State Route 2 with the hill and limited sight distance. So, uh, we were able to confirm that by forcing everyone leaving the school to go northbound, uh, they, we were able to justify putting in a traffic signal at, uh, 20 and Cougar Road. Uh, but certainly, uh, one key aspect to make this function properly is to widen Cougar Road and add the right turn lane, uh, which is, uh, what this request is, uh, is all about. And, uh, I think we, my boss, the head traffic engineer, uh, at Endot Laporte District had, had modeled it and, and, uh, you know, with that widening, I think our level of services are basically As and Bs for all the different movements in the intersection with the widening. Without it, it's, uh, I think the, the grades are Cs and Ds. So it definitely will function much more efficiently, uh, with, with this improvement.
And this, this dollar, is Mitch on there? I know you're pointing to a screen and I'm not seeing that. Right. Is that you, Mitch?
I, I mind it.
There he is.
Uh, get it? Hello?
So.
Hear me?
Yeah. So this dollar, it says 210,000, but we had talked and you'd sent something out and I forwarded it to the rest of the council. It, we're hoping it's actually going to come in around 190,000?
Yeah. Uh, that was the discussion if the county highway would do some of their work out there, um, primarily, uh, from the excavation work.
I think that was what, a, like a $15,000 savings if they did that?
Yes, yeah.
So it's not. So if not, so the, the options are the highway department either participates and we save roughly 15,000 or we appropriate the 210 to cover everything.
Yeah, not exceed.
Right.
Right.
And, um, I reached, I've actually talked to both, uh, Mike and Adam and I, and I know Mike Rosenbaum has talked to him also and their, Endot is anxious to get this project going so that things can be done prior to the school year, starting in the fall, hopefully, uh, starting in the fall. So, um, does anybody have any questions of, uh, either Mike or Adam with Endot?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment.
Make a motion, we get it going.
Well, I'll make, I'll make the motion first, but I, I'll make the motion to spend from the MVH restricted fund 1173 for Cougar Road project, not to exceed, and I'm going to reduce the amount to 195, reducing it to $15,000 so that we, uh, utilize the highway department to, uh, take care of, um, the, the, um, the ground, uh, the, um, the land of, uh, putting in, um,
Turn lane excavation.
The excavation, uh, to the, to the level that Endot will allow because there's some things that for insurance purposes, they need to maintain. The other thing I want to make, um, so that's the motion that I'll, I'll make comment after.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mollnauer. On the question, Mr. Quinn, is this project moving forward? Just whether we appropriate the funds or not?
Uh, yes, our, the Endot's portion of the, uh, project, uh, bid last, uh, last month and we should be having our kickoff meeting fairly soon. Uh, we're modifying the intersection at State Route 2 and Cougar, uh, modifying, uh, 20 Cougar and including, uh, installing the traffic signal as well as resurfacing US 20 from 600 East to the town limit in New Carrollio. Uh, bids are, I think it came in at 1.6 million is what Endot is investing, uh, in this part of the roadway network, uh, on our, on our behalf, uh, yes.
But it won't have this turn lane.
But correct, it wouldn't have the turn lane. Uh, without it, you know, we could, you know, we could try to get creative with the si- signal times to make it work as well as it could, uh, take more time away from US 20, uh, during those peak times when the schools are both, you know, starting and, and, uh, releasing at the end of the day.
Is there any other questions?
My, I've constantly, so let them talk.
Yeah, it's all engineer. Am I, am I still, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we, first thing, fourth order bid would be to acquire, uh, two acres of two property owners. Uh, we're estimating that's around $25,000. I still, can we take that out of the NBA fund? So that's more difficult fund?
I don't think so.
For purchasing a property? That would be another one order bid.
That's a Joey question.
Can you repeat it?
We have, uh, to get back.
Wants to know if the purchase of the, the acquisition of the property, the acquisition of the property for the turn lane, can that 20 to 25,000 dollars be a, you, taken out of the motor vehicle fund or does it have to come out of somewhere else?
No, you can take it out of the, it's, it's for, um, for road construction. So you can take it out of there.
Okay. We'll proceed then with that.
Is there any other questions?
Yes, I do, Mr. President.
Yes.
You know, in doing some of my research, I've talked to, um, well, one, two, three, four individuals as well as, um, investigations. Um, and, uh, I know that there was a meeting at the school, uh, sometime back and that was, you know, the, the public was invited. But in order, you know, because I'm here, both sides of this, I guess in order to make some sort of, you know, more educated decision as far as what the people are thinking, would it be, um, would it be out of line to advertise for a public comment at our meeting so that we have remonstrators for or against? Um, and I, I understand the timeline, but, uh, if we could maybe, uh, a special meeting or just make it at our Zoom meeting that still gives them a couple of months, we don't even know if schools are going to hold it.
Mitch, Mitch. Right. Mr. Santana, Mr. Santana?
Question or the rest of you guys?
Right.
I would, I would like to hear from the people.
Mr. Santana? Just, just so you know, they advertised, this was advertised, $210,000 was advertised for tonight's meeting in the public.
Can I, can I add now?
Hang on a second. Is he, does that answer your question?
Wait a minute. Uh, yeah, I just, uh, yeah, something popped up. I had to unmute. Um, well, yeah, but, uh, I, I think this is, I mean, it's, it's not a great deal of money, but it is. And I would like to hear from those that, you know, go that way and, and what, what, what they were saying. I understand that it was advertised, but sometimes we might need to for, for other, um, venues or different things that we're trying to do. Um, you know, throw it out there in, in, you know, a little bit bigger fashion of advertising. That's, that's my thing.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yeah, I, I've got a lot to add, um, to go on this. I've spoken to a lot more than four or five people to come to a conclusion here. Okay? So don't start telling me four or five people and you're going to throw your arms up in the air. Okay? What has happened here is they had a public meeting. They had a big thorough, long discussion. That was before I came on here. So then afterwards, we put this on hold in November because I went out, I substitute teach in those schools over there. I talked with teachers in both schools. I talked with administration in both schools. So I didn't just talk with four or five people. I've spoken with at least 50 different people. I then went and met with Endot. I've also met with the chief, with, uh, with, with the sheriff. So I brought this around. We were trying to make part of the road that is one way to be for local traffic to go down, go south. And that didn't happen, but that is not our say. That is the say of the commissioners. All we can do is make it easier and safer for our students who drive and the teachers who drive to be able to get out of their, uh, out of their school at the crunch times. So that is what this is about. We have spent money in other districts or we are spending money in the near future for sidewalks and other things and union mills and in other areas. So now it's about time that when there's a big project going on in Rolling Prairie, that we also commit and do it. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
Okay, okay, yeah. Okay, I got a response. Hey, uh, Mr. Rosenbaum, wow, and hey Joey, you know, in the last conference with Christie, you know, I sharply said something as far as saying, hey, why are you talking? I still have the floor. You might, uh, you might jot that down in the minutes here.
Let's, let's focus on the meeting. Let's, let's.
This is not about your opinion or my opinion. Hey, I'm just trying to gain some more information and thank you for the investigative work that you've done. And, and, and I've, I've appreciated that. And I've listened to you. I just would like to, again, add something so that the people can speak in a public forum. Um, that's, that's all I'm saying, man. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a comment?
I agree with Mike. I, I'm totally on board with that project. So
All right.
That's right. We spent a lot of money on Hannah, Union Mills, and the other area in Rolling Prairie. It's time now to do something for that school system.
Great. Is there any other comments?
I would like to, uh, I would like to ask this, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Yagowski, um, you had spoken to this, uh, to some degree. Um, are you going to have a comment on this tonight?
I'll just wait my turn. I'm sorry, just wait my turn.
All right. Mr. Yagowski?
Is it my turn now? Thank you. Um, I would, the comment that, um, some people made about fair amount of money going to, to different areas. I, look, if, if Rolling Prairie wants to put one-way streets down every road down there, that's up to them. I could care less. I would, I would be objected if I lived there, but that's not, that's not what I have, I'm here for. I did go out there three times under the sheriff's direction to watch school let out, which you and I talked about, we had a meeting about this. Um, I also seen the dangers when Rogers High School was a one-way street going out and to and from what happened there. And I've seen how kids, when they get out, will take the shortcut. I did talk to the sheriff about the same comment. He understood what I meant by that because he, he knows what happened back in the day when, when, when the school system had that certain situation. I'm more worried about the one-way street with the idea of the farmers that have talked to me, not a bunch of people like you guys, but that farmers, the highway department who's, who has some difficulty, snow plowing. And of course, the dangers of kids trying to find a sneak, excuse me, I'm sorry. And the kids that are trying to sneak out, which that's what they're going to do because.
I'm not sorry, hey.
Oh, sorry. And kids that are going to do natural thing, they're going to sneak and try to go out the other way, going from one-way street. Those are just things that are common things that happen. I, I can't fix what people do. I was never against it. I just thought that we're throwing some things this way and I thought that the direction was wrong, what direction? And, and, and so I don't, I have support to, like I said, if the community wants all one-way streets, that's up to them. I could care less. I would not want it. But, uh, but what I'm objecting to is the way they proposed it and, and those three things were not addressed. But that's just again, my opinion.
Does anybody else have a comment? I just want to say, the only thing that I'm going to add is, uh, and I know the other council members received the same thing, but I probably received 40 to 45 emails requesting that the campgrounds be reopened again under the governor's thing. So that people can go out, go camping and help the RV industry. I've received zero, zero calls or emails from anybody in that area saying, hey, I'm, I'm not in favor of this. Now, I know other people have. And I've talked to, uh, Mr. Yagowski and some other people. They have. I haven't. So, um, and this has been going on for, it seems like a year now. And you would think that there'd be, there'd be a little bit more of a, of an out. and you would think that there'd be, there'd be a little bit more of a, of an outcry if it was that, if it was that bad of a thing, so. That's all I, that's all I've got.
Again, I think you and I made this conversation, I, I agree with exactly what you're saying, but you also didn't get those that were opposed. We, we got absolutely nothing, and you're right, and I received all those emails on cabins and RVs, and I was like, wow, all across, uh, Lepore County, but we didn't get anything from, again, uh, for or against, um, so I guess they both put each other out to say, I don't know why this, uh, there's not, uh, uh, support either way.
Well, I think there's, I think there's support, but, so with that, we're going to call for the vote. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So I'm going to take that as a five to two. Does anybody have a? Is that?
So I would like five to two for you.
All right. All right, so the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Members of the Council.
Right, better get to work. Any correspondence? Christie? Joey? No. Ordenses? No. Appropriations transfer request, Lepore County Sheriff requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or General for merit overtime in the amount of $60,000. Good evening.
Good evening. I can't wear my mask and the glasses at the same time because I can't see that, it fogs up, I haven't mastered that yet, we're far enough apart that I think we're all safe.
Okay.
Uh, we, we are requesting an appropriation in the amount of $60,000. You've gotten my email by now. We started out the year with a $60,000, uh, budgeted for merit overtime. We're coming to, uh, very near end of that, and that's for a number of reasons, uh, which include a, a number of protracted investigations, a number of callouts, which include our emergency response team, which include our SCUBA team, multiple occasions. Uh, we've also had, um, at the, at the end of many shifts where we've had arrests where we have to get paperworked in time, uh, to satisfy requirements from the prosecutor and the courts. We have had to backfill some positions, but fortunately, we didn't have to backfill any positions as a result of COVID-19 because we reassigned all our school resource officers back, and so they were able to actually enhance our shifts, so while we did have some deputies that were out as a result of being quarantined because they were, uh, symptomatic, they ultimately got negative tests back, they couldn't be working, we didn't have to backfill any positions as a result of that. Uh, last year at this time, we came before you and asked for an appropriation the same time in May for $60,000 for a merit overtime. Uh, I should add, and it was in the email as well, we've had now three, uh, uh, demonstrations at either the Westville Correctional Center or the Indiana State Prison in which we've had to have extra, uh, manpower come in as well.
With your pleasure. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by?
From, uh, excuse me, I said, from General Fund.
Motion by Mister Yagowski from General Fund, is there a second? Second?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mister Yagowski.
This, this was, I might have heard the wrong thing, maybe if I did, that's fine. Was any of this, uh, for the hospitals to?
It's a good question. I, I received that same question earlier today from Mister Santana. Perhaps my email was misleading, no. We did not specifically assign someone to sit at the hospital because of, uh, the security scares, but what we did is we increased our presence there. While we had the demonstrations at Westville Correctional Center in the Indiana State Prison, we merely asked our personnel to beef up their presence there. We utilized officers that we were paying to be at Westville, Indiana State Prison, along with the Indiana State Police to go up there, just increase their presence and come right back down to the prison facility just for peace of mind, not knowing if the protesters would go to the hospital and disrupt there. But no, they, they did not specifically just sit there for the purpose of guarding the hospital.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a question? I see Mister Moulton's lips moving, but I don't hear it. Nothing.
How about now?
Yep, yep.
Uh, do you have any in the academy right now, or is everybody out and, uh, or military?
Yes, we do have one that's been on military leave since, um, right around, uh, the first of December. He's due back about the end of September, October. We have two more that we've been told that are going on long, um, uh, tours as well. Uh, we don't have anybody in the academy right now because the academies are currently closed, they're in hiatus, and, uh, we actually made an inquiry today to find out when they would resume. With that said, we should have three in the academy right now, but the prior academy class was postponed mid-academy, and so when they do reconvene, they have to get those individuals that had already been in the academy through and past, and then they can start the regular academy class that was supposed to start first week of May.
So how many are you sure?
Right now, we're three.
Three?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody?
I have probably one other thing, but I'd rather, uh, give you a call in another day or two, just that question, but, um, pertaining to this, but, uh, it can wait.
Mister Quinn?
Thank you, Sheriff. Um, do you expect that this will, um, be enough for the rest of the year?
Uh, it's hard to tell.
In, 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 the reason I ask that, in response to your email, I, I asked just for some historical numbers on, on, um, overtime, and it looks like in the past five years, um, we've spent on average about $170,000 in overtime. Um, I'm not sure why we're budgeting $60,000, uh, a year for that, um, but, uh, so, you know, I, if, if you could speak to at all, um, what you predict, it, it might look like.
But we could have, um, a, a large-scale investigation that could happen tonight, and we could spend $8,000 in overtime just for that investigation. We could have an emergency response team call out or a SCUBA call out. Uh, with that said, we had an administrative staff meeting this morning, as we do every Monday morning, although we had it today because of the holiday, and we talked about how busy our patrol shifts were this weekend because of our geographic location with Michigan closed down and Illinois closed down, we had an influx of people into Lepore County. There wasn't a hotel room that was available in the south end of Michigan City. Uh, there were no vacancies, and a lot of those people brought some trouble with them, and we were running from call to call to call to call this weekend. Even though we were at our shift minimum, we had the amount of cars that were required, we discussed that perhaps, starting next weekend, on Fridays and Saturday nights, we should actually add an additional car, just because we are so busy putting out those fires from people that are coming in from other states that think that it's an open season to start partying in Indiana and Lepore County. So it's been a real issue for us, so I, I can't forecast that. Historically, uh, speaking, we're probably going to have to come back and ask for another increment of $60,000. We don't want to be, uh, too greedy right now, but at the same time, I've got to be realistic. Uh, i- if our summer is in the indication like Memorial Day weekend, and granted, it was the first weekend of summer and it was really hot out, uh, we're in for a very long summer. And the Michigan City Police Department and the Lepore Police Department and the Indiana State Police would agree with you. I talked with the sheriff of Porter County today, they experienced the same thing over there this weekend, so it's not just here in Lepore County.
Great. Thank you. Mister Quinn, are you done?
Yes.
Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, um, permission to spend from the misdemeanor fund for warrant maintenance on fingerprint scanner in the amount of $1,980.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Mister Yagowski, second and by Mister Quinn. Is there any questions? Hearing none?
No, I do have a quick question. I just saw it say for.
Microphone.
This does say for warranty maintenance, that means this is to be on top of the scan, we already have the scanner.
Yes.
So this is just the normal.
That's, that's what we're responsible for.
I just want to make sure we're all understanding. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is request permission to spend from arrest forfeitures to switch cell phone coverage not to exceed $30,000. This is the AT&T?
FirstNet, yes, yes. This is the emergency services phone system that we're going to upgrade to. I'm making a motion by upgrading to it from Verizon, so we're actually going to see a savings, um, I just want to remind you that we do pay for our monthly cell phones from our commissary account, it's not a line item, uh, but we, we're expecting and anticipating that we're going to save between $5 and $10 per phone per month as a result of going to FirstNet. We think the service will be better, we also know in a crisis, it will be much more, uh, user-friendly, where they can actually, uh, narrow it so just emergency services can utilize that system. We had an incident that I described in, in my email at New Prairie last year where that was a very problem. We, we had very little communication because the cells were flooded by parents, students, uh, getting on, and we had virtually no communications out there, you know, other than our, our portable radios, but a lot of the information that we needed to get back and forth was sensitive, or we had to get in touch with an intelligence source or, um, a, a, um, social media provider that obviously they don't have portable radios that they work off of.
Yep. Was there a second?
Motion to approve.
Was there a second? I thought I already had a, you already made the motion.
I, I was making the motion, but I did not realize I was cutting the sheriff off, because I was going to ask him to explain further, and he just did it for me, so.
All right, so motion by Roosevelt, second and by Santana? Second?
Yes.
Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Next item on the agenda is Lepore County EMS requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or General for budget?
Shortage.
I'm going to try it again. Budget shortages due to COVID-19. Uh, first account, do you want to do these all together?
Yeah, do them together.
Is that okay? First one is $1,500 for supplies, second one is $1,500 for household, and $65,000 in court compliance, which, I believe that's.
I would make a motion, Mr. President, that, uh, we would take it out of General Fund.
We have a motion by Santana. Out of General. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mister Yagowski. On the question, Mister Quinn, are these funds reimbursable? They should, they should be under the?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Yes.
I was talking with, uh, yeah, I was talking with Andrew today about that too, as I am his, uh, liaison, and yes, absolutely, we're going to put it in, but as we know, that, what we don't know, uh, what, what is reimbursed or not, but it's absolutely, and he told me he is keeping, you know, all those records, and that will be submitted to Joey.
Right, Joey?
Right.
Is there any other questions? Mister Quinn?
So will these funds be coming from the fund that we set up, uh, at the last meeting?
No. No, um, because, um, they incurred these costs before we set up that fund, they can't be, um, reimbursed with that fund.
But we can.
As a state board law.
Okay, but we can still apply, we can still ask for reimbursement.
Right, we can, we can ask for reimbursement from the cares there.
Right.
And we are, we will.
It, it, it just won't come from the $300,000 that we appropriated, correct, Joey?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. Great, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, um, Lepore County Coroner requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or General for professional services for corner calls in the amount of $8,600.
Uh, I'm requesting this money, um, because we're kind of like what we're doing with the sheriff. We're not only doing our regular call suicides, homicides, accidental deaths and all that, but now we're, we're having to go, we are physically going into the prisons now for these deaths, and so we're running two-man shifts. Um, we used to be, w- w- one man person would go in, one person would go in to these circumstances. We're taking two people in now, and this should carry me for the next three months. We're hoping, and I think in my later, letter I stated, that this should carry the, I shouldn't say overtime, because we're just paying an, an extra person, one of our own staff, um, and again, they don't get benefits. Um, they're considered, um, uh, professional, um, employees, but not receiving benefits. So running the two people on, on these shifts, especially with this COVID thing in the prisons, uh, this is basically, should cover us for the next three months, and hopefully we're going to be past all this.
And they're, they get paid per call?
Correct.
So it's not like an hourly, where people are sitting there, but they have nothing to do, it's strictly per call?
That's right. They, they don't, they don't get paid sitting at home, they only get paid if they have, if they have to go out.
All right.
And, and you can easily identify these calls as a?
You can easily identify these calls as COVID-19 calls primarily, or can we account for those, and then could we then apply that, Joey, to the funds that we're trying to re, get reimbursed? So first, a question to you is can we identify them as COVID-19?
Well, we're dispatched by 911, um, is, is, is how we, we get dispatched out. It'll, it'll say a, a code 1,000, which means it's a possible COVID, so we suit up, we go in, do that, and we're also doing for the people that post-mortem, we're also testing the people that are deceased not knowing if they're, um, COVID positive. We are testing, giving results to Indiana State Board of Health, also to the families that are involved, that may have been in the home with them, let them know that your loved one did pass, and yes, they're, um, COVID positive.
So then the next, I turn the question to the auditor, can this also be applied, can we also apply for re, uh, reimbursement and add this as part of the cost that we are incurring?
Well, we would have to, we would have to prove that it's COVID-related, so if we took, um, the, uh, deceased test away from the COVID, uh, virus, yes, it can be.
But I, but I would think we.
We have to differentiate.
I would think we could make a good argument with the uptick at the Westville Correctional Center, that with the coroner adding an extra person in the amount of $8,600, we can make a pretty good argument that that should be a reimbursable under the COVID thing.
We just, we, they may want us to, uh.
Break it down and?
Send the test certificates yourself.
Okay. Mister Yagowski?
I understood, I didn't agree with, but I understood because I think we should have got reimbursed by a lot of, uh, areas that were out there when the drug situation happened, and we spent numerous amounts of money, but skipping all that, go to the hospitals, go to nursing homes, anything that, that happens during this time is a COVID accident, so they're not testing additionally, why are you and nobody else testing additionally? Because I can know for a fact, the hospitals and the nursing homes are not doing that. So why are we burdening this on, they're, they're putting this all under a blanket anyway? So I, I, I think it's fair if you're going to, if you're going to start increasing, if that's your actual increase, that we should, we should, the council should be informed that, just like you did with the drug situation that was going on.
Right.
And I'm telling you right now, the state of Indiana, the state of the United States, nobody's, they're classifying everything. If you're in a nursing home, you pass away because of old age, you're getting classified as COVID-19. So I don't understand, we're, we're, uh, Lepore County's now picking up the cost, and we should, when everybody else is not doing that.
Okay, and, um, to address what you're asking, we only, if somebody dies in a nursing home, someone dies at the hospital, they have already been tested for, already for the virus. Even if they come in through ER, they've already been tested.
I know, I know for a fact.
We're talking if they died home, if they're in an automobile, if they're something other than a facility, then we are testing post-mortem after they're dead to see if the, if they're positive.
Yeah, you, you said, no, now you didn't say that, because that's, they are classifying everything as.
Correct.
There is no squams about it, so I, you know, we're, if we're going to sit there in
So everything's going to blanket, it's a blanket thing, that's what they're going to get down. They're getting reimbursed for that.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd just like to make a comment, and I believe that I am going to support this, but I guess, I guess one of my questions is, is if you normally have one person respond, but now you're putting them in two-person teams, now we, now we are subjecting, if one person could respond to a home and get the victim out of the, and I understand freeing up police wire, all of that, I don't think, you know, as I've talked to them, I don't think that they've ever really, really been delayed. I'd rather you call the fire department for a lift assist and go ahead and free up EMS because they can go from wherever they are in EMS, if they have their grand ones back in service, that's one thing. But I'm just saying right now during this time, is it, is it, are we doing the wrong thing as far as putting two people in harm's way when they respond into a house where one person could do it? I'm just asking.
Okay. That's a good question. The reason we're sending two people in now is what we're doing, Mr. Santana, is that basically, I can, I'll say this very gently, we're taking the body, we are double body bagging them, we are disinfecting the body. No one else is doing that. If we go into a home, we have to disinfect the body, we have to double bag them before the body's taken out. EMS won't do it. The fire department will do it. That's our responsibility, it falls on us. With two people doing it, we can do it in an efficient way, we can do it in a manner that is so much easier than calling in. And yes, we still call fire for a lift assist, we still call the police, and we still use them in that capacity. But as far as the getting the body out of the home, out of the apartment, out of the car, that's still our responsibility. So that's the reason we're doing two people, it's making it so much easier because one person cannot. And we cannot ask the fire to come in and help us put somebody in a body bag and disinfect that body before it leaves the home or where the body is at. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Well, under these unusual situations and circumstances, you feel, and you are a professional, professional sir, that it would be, you know, in the best interest to do that. Again, if this thing's God, let's focus in those way, then you'll go back to your routine and not come back to counsel and say, oh, you know, the two-man system is, you know what I'm saying, man? Because then that doubles up.
Correct. Great. Is there a motion?
There are no motions.
Did you make the motion? Motion by Mr. Yagowski, was there a second?
If not, I'll make the second.
Seconded by, motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Santana. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, those opposed? Thank you.
Okay. And I'd like to one quick comment. We've been working very closely with EMA. They've done a great job for our office. We've gotten all the equipment we've needed. I've talked to coroners all over the state. They don't have nearly the equipment that we have in personal protection equipment, body bags, disinfectant, we have all that. And thanks to EMA right here in our own county, he's gone to bat for us. And like I say, it's been great. And I appreciate all he's done in that office. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob. Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Adult Probation requesting permission to spend from probation user fees for a television for Lepore County Circuit Court amount not to exceed $1,600.
If you don't mind, I'll make that.
Sure. Jeff?
Here.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. About a decade ago, we used non-taxpayer money to get a document presentation system where the jury could see videos, interviews, photographs, documents during the course of the jury trial. And at that time, it was prohibited to buy anything larger than a 55 in screen. And it's slightly inadequate for what we normally would use, but didn't feel it buy anything. It's a, uh, uh, nah, right. Considerably for the telephone, to use as a monitor. And the other situation that we have going at the same time is we are now going to be forced to use the entire courtroom as the jury box. So in case he's in the, in order to use the social distance, get the social distancing in, we'll know, find the jury box, but we'll be using the gallery as well. So I've done some research and for this amount of money, easily get more than that under normal circumstances and would probably be at least adequate to accomplish our task. Now, I know when they're building the new building in Michigan City, those courts are all going to get like, uh, court access. Only use hours a month at most. I can't spend $10,000, $15,000 for something that I think you can get. And those things will, will, they'll become, you know, for five years. And the limited number of hours these TVs actually run, this should last twenty years or so. So that's the purpose. Once again, this is not taxpayer money, it's yearly money, who have been convicted of crime that they ended up suffering.
Great. Mr. President? Motion by Mr. Yagowski?
Or did?
Seconded by Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Hey, Mr. President, before we move on too fast, I was just, I received a text from Andrew McGuire, our EMS director, and he wanted to weigh in earlier. So before we go to, you know, the comments, Andrew, if you're still, if that's okay, Mr. President?
Well, hang on a second. I just want to, let me finish this. So there weren't nobody opposed. And just for the record, Judge, did you vote on that? I could have sworn I heard you say aye when we voted that. I just wanted to kick that one. All right. With that said, Andrew McGuire, are you on there?
Yeah, I'm on here. Can you hear me?
All right, yes, go ahead. Thank you, Jeff.
Uh, yeah, so Congressman Rosebaum made a comment earlier about the Lepore base project. So I just want to weigh in a little bit about that and give a little update. It's been quite a resting year regarding this base project. I really want to thank Larry Luntowski for all that he worked on this project. He's able to listen to our need, function building, and staying very tight budget and doing so. So I had thought, I'm very glad. We did our final review last week. Pretty exciting. We began moving stuff in today, of course, on the hottest day of the year. It's going to start to do some stuff in, probably tomorrow day. We're going to finish that tomorrow. And tomorrow also we have a minor improvement on our radio system. Our IT will be either hooking up all our computers, our phones, TVs, and hopefully by early evening, late afternoon, we will be fully functioning out of our new base there at the court by the hospital. So that's my update. Very exciting. And I do hope that this is the last time for many years that we have to move that base. And the third time we've had to move, it's the last, seems like last couple of years, but about the last five years, we moved it three times. So, but, but yeah, thanks. A lot of, a lot of hard work and a lot of support from a lot of people.
Great. Thank you. Maybe you could go through and do a video tour of the facility, Andrew.
I'm sorry, I can't hear that.
Maybe you could go through and do a video tour of the facility and send it out to everybody for the people that can't.
Yeah, you could do that. It's a good idea.
Definitely. Mr. Irik?
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
I have one other permission to spend question.
Where is that?
I ran by the auditor last week. We chose for a person to replace some computers and an Apple iPad in Spirit Court 1 for a amount of $3,597. And it'll be coming off our probation user fees as well. I ran it by Bradley and just wanted to add that on in hospital.
It wasn't advertised, so I don't think...
We're looking at you. Okay. Give us a nod or something. So what's the council's pleasure?
What do you have with that? Gold account.
Well, we can, so it's, I mean, we don't have to advertise it.
It's okay.
Permission to spend.
And it's permission to spend out of one of their funds.
It's coming out of, it's coming out of the probationary user fee, right?
I remember seeing that email.
Right.
I'll make the motion to get it moving along, to give permission to spend from the probation user fees, the amount of $3,597 for computer and an Apple iPad.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Quinn. On the question, Mr. Yagowski.
How soon do you have to have them? I know, I know sometimes, I'm sorry, thank you.
How soon do you have to have these, Steve?
Judge Ferguson had asked, you know, maybe he saw the center and later he was like worn out.
I understand. The reason I'm asking is because I already know it's going, it's not nothing to you with you, I just know, I know the history of what happens here. We already, was it 20 laptops we had, iPads? We purchased all these iPads and those are all going to come back to us. If they can wait just a little bit, which I think they can, because as soon as, as soon as we get these people back from home here, they have to return these computers. We have the computers purchased right now. I plan, I, my intent being on the, on the data board is all 20 will be coming back to us and be used for these purchase, these uses coming up. So I don't, I don't, I would prefer if you ask Mr. Ferguson if he could wait just a little bit, because I think here for the next couple of weeks, I believe we're going to have those available. It's going to take that long for you to get them anyway.
If I can ask the question, are these, Steve, are these all laptops?
Can I have her up there? Mr. President, can I have her go up there?
I'll just take it while she's here.
She's going anyways.
The one laptop that he is requesting, he is currently using the one from the previous judge, so that, you know, he, he doesn't, that one is needed.
That's fine.
According to the quote, it's two HP Pro Books.
Okay.
And then one Apple iPad Pro.
Okay.
The Pro Books are laptops.
I know. But we have those out, right? We purchased them.
I would prefer to have David, if she feels both are accessible.
We will be getting those laptops back.
How much is it, the one, that one thing he needs, how much is that one item?
The one Apple iPad.
Do you have the quote in front of you, Steve, for the iPad?
I do.
Steve, were you on vacation? I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Steve, were you on vacation? I'm just curious.
Oh, this is California.
Your balcony?
Actually, California two years ago.
And, and just, you're trying to get it so we quarantine you for 14 days is what you're trying to do. It's not going to work.
So the iPad was $1,799.
Yes.
I, I would like to amend my motion to reduce it, knowing that now that we have laptops available coming back within the next few weeks. So I'd like to amend it for the purchase of, permission to spend from probation user fees, account 2102, to purchase the one iPad, one Apple iPad for $1,799. And then I would need the second to be...
We have a motion by Mr. Rosebaum, seconded by Mr. Quinn. Are you good with that?
Second.
All right. On the question, is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion passes. Is there any council comments?
Are we going to be back in the meeting room in June?
Well, we can be, yeah. We're probably still going to be distancing, so.
The, the order, the governor's order, if I remember.
The governor's order was only through June 4th for the Zoom meetings.
Right.
So until he extends that, we would have to be back here.
All right. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. President, while you still have your full quorum and everyone in attendance, I did some thorough checking, got clarification. It's a one to three day turnaround from the state's final look with Okra, and I mistakenly said two to three weeks.
If you had a bulldog, he's going to...
It's one to three days, one to three days. That's very good news. I wanted to clarify that for everyone, because the whole point is expediency here, so.
Better notified.
Yeah. Thank you.
So with that, with that conversation, we'd like to see ours go, instead of two to three weeks, make it two weeks, so this is effective all the way around.
We're going to kick it up a notch. Is there any other council comments?
Thank you, Tony. Thank you. Comments ready if you're ready.
Sure.
Whatever. First of all, I want to, I want to let everybody know, because of what's been going on over the last five months, that, you know, there, there was jailer appreciation, EMA appreciation, E911 appreciation, all these are weeks, EMS appreciation, and those days came and went. And I just think, you know, we as leaders, because those are gone, those weeks are gone. But during, you know, any, any conversations that you have with those citizens or what have you, would you, would you remind them, you know, and seriously, on a daily basis, that these are the ones that we really need, you know, our frontliners to, to say thank you for. I tried to, you know, do what I could do to, to appreciate them with a couple of different things. And so I just think because it, it just, you know, just got so enveloped in this. And outside of that, I want to say, I want to thank the sheriff, if, if he's still there,